First, go live.
Okay. Well, welcome everybody to this December second Planning Commission work session. We had talked about doing a kind of a training on our new newly passed conditional use permit. And the process of planning commission review and consideration of a conditional use permit. As as we know, working through that process that there's that we we shifted from unrestricted to general use. And we did enumerate a list of, oh, I think it was about 12 particular uses, which would require the conditional use permit. And and our legal counsel, the Levesque Law Group has experience within the municipal planning process, legalities thereof, and has conducted trainings for planning commissions in Alaska. And we wanted to take the opportunity to to engage our our legal counsel for their assistance and training in in not only the conditional use permit, but some other aspects of quasi judicial proceedings. And so I was really thankful that Shane Levesque could could put that training together for us, cater it to our needs. And and present it for you tonight and look forward to a good learning session. And for some of you who've who've served on the commission and other bodies, some of it will will be familiar. Hopefully, it's a good refresher and we do have some newer members of the body and and some it'll be some new information. So um, so I I think it'll be really worthwhile and and looking forward to it. And so with that, I think I'll go ahead and and turn it over to Shane or Kestlin is our presiding officer. Do you have anything else you want to say introducing the session?
Not really. I Shane, I appreciate you being here and I'm I'm really happy to have this training. I think we're all gonna get a lot out of it. Thanks.
Oh, well, you know, it's it's my pleasure. Thanks so much for having me. As the the mayor explained, our our law firm, we represent a variety of municipalities throughout Alaska and we have for years and years. And the law firm is made up of of two attorneys. It's me and my brother. So we're the Leveque Law Group and he's 18 years older than me. So I like to say that I'm the the younger, but not the lesser Leveque by any means. But one of my specialties where I've focused has been on has been on local zoning and land use. And when the mayor approached with the idea of presenting a training, I jumped on on it for a variety of reasons. First of all, because you're our client. So we're, you know, we're here for you. But I mentioned to him earlier that, you know, because we've done so many trainings. This year has placed a big damper on that. We haven't gotten in to see the people that we typically would or to do the trainings that we would. So this is actually my very first remote training that I've ever done. So I have to lead with that and apologize in advance if I do something really stupid technologically. But I'm going to trust that Amber is going to keep me in line if I I run afoul of the technology. Now, I also want to thank all of you for being here because the only thing that a lawyer likes better than hearing himself talk is an audience to hear him talk. So I mean, this is a great turnout for a training session like this. That being said, just to kind of go into a little bit about what I was hoping to go over today before I activate the presentation. I I want to emphasize from the beginning that this is just an overview overview of the process and the legal requirements that will attach to the process by which you determine whether or not to grant an application for a conditional use permit. It's in very broad strokes. And that's because those of you who have already participated in the plating process know that it requires a very specific quasi judicial proceeding. And it it's important that each commissioner understands exactly what the nature of your role is. Because quasi judicial proceedings do have very specific requirements under Alaska law. This is, in my mind, the first in what will probably be a series of trainings that occurs. This is to just provide the, you know, the surface level discussion so that you have a better idea of the questions that you need to ask in in upcoming trainings. I wanted to also let you know that along with this training, I have begun working with the mayor and with Martian putting together, really refining the internal staff processes for administering these permits. Because that's another aspect that's very, very important and makes your jobs as commissioners easier. So unless anyone has some initial questions beforehand, I'm going to just gonna turn into the presentation. Anything from anyone? Okay, well then, let it begin. All right, so I I prepared this PowerPoint presentation and I think that PowerPoint presentations, you know, they're they're great if you use them. Okay. I'm I'm going to move through this material fairly quickly because there is a lot of ground to cover. But if at any point anyone has a question, please get my attention somehow. I'm I'm not sure exactly how you do this here with my my screen shared because it's taking up everything. And I can't see if a hand is raised. Really, I see a couple of portraits, but that's it. But let's go ahead and move along. So, you know, tonight, I've separated this training into two distinct portions. The first one is going to allow us to review the borough's procedures for considering and issuing conditional use permits. The second is to do a little bit of a deeper dive into the requirements of law that govern your quasi judicial processes. Because like I said before, quasi judicial proceedings have so many very specific requirements of law. And if any of those requirements are skipped over or they're violated, it can invalidate the process itself and can create issues that arise on appeal through your further appeal process to the Board of Adjustment and then onto the Superior Court. And we want to make sure that all the good decisions, all the right decisions are made at the outset. So let's go into just what what has been set up right now with the borough's ordinance that governs the conditional use permitting process. So first, let's talk really quickly about exactly what conditional uses are and why it's important, right? Conditional uses are those uses that have been identified by a municipality that due to their very specific or particular natures are deemed to be allowable only in very specific circumstances or within very particular locations. Okay, they require review and approval by the local zoning authorities, which in tandem with the Borough Administration includes the commission. And it is these two authorities working in conjunction with one another who are permitted to impose reasonable requirements or conditions to ensure that those proposed uses when they are when they are permitted to conform with local land use goals. Okay, so you, I I'm assuming that most of you already know these conditions very, very intimately because you participated in the process where these were created. But your code currently identifies these very specific conditional uses. There are correctional facilities, correctional community residential centers, sexually oriented commercial businesses, large scale commercial businesses, and of course marijuana related businesses, which are, you know, a very big. Well, they're very, they're very prominent right now in the Alaska landscape, right? And a lot of communities are just now coming to deal with permitting these particular businesses in their communities, commercial power generation facilities, microwave and cell tower facilities and installations, solid waste facilities, airports, whether they're public or private, cemeteries, any kind of hazardous waste processing for commercial purposes, as well as commercial pipelines and gravel peat and soil extraction that occurs on private property. So the very first thing that you that it's important for both the borough and the commission to understand at a first level is who is permitted to request that a conditional use permit even be issued? And your code identifies only two parties who are permitted to do that, either the owner of a property, right? Where the proposed uses plan to occur or their authorized agent, right? So that means that you know, one thing that the commission and the borough will want to consider is in which instances a person becomes an authorized agent of the landowner, right? So that's one of the the very frontline questions that you have to answer yourselves because there will be instances in which a person leases a property and they're not the owner, but they have an ownership interest, right? But in that instance, there is some question based upon this language as to whether even an individual who holds a lease is required to be authorized to apply for that conditional use permit either by the landowner or to get the landowner to be a co applicant. So the very first step in any kind of conditional use process is submitting the application. Okay, and the Borough Code in this instance says that there are three things primarily that an individual who applies for a conditional use permit has to submit with an application. It's the application form that's created by the borough for that purpose, the filing fee, right? And then also a very detailed site plan. Okay, so the next question, of course, is well, what is what is a detailed site plan? You know, what what will satisfy that requirement? Well, the code answers that in stating that it is a plan that shows where all of the buildings and improvements will be located within the particular parcel where the conditional use is proposed, that shows all the access points, all the circulation patterns for both vehicles and for pedestrians or any other kind of traffic that might occur around the area, as well as parking areas, if that's applicable, buffering and drainage plans, which are, you know, can be very, very huge concerns for especially neighboring landowners who stand to be affected by one of these uses. And then also the very specific location on that parcel where the conditional use will occur. So after the application is submitted to the borough, the code states that the mayor or the mayor's designee, and in this instance, I'm assuming and Mr. Mayor, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm assuming that that the designee would likely be Marcia in that instance. In that instance, the code says that a determination must be made within 30 days of the submission whether the application has been deemed to be complete. And it's important to know whether it's complete because that sets an entirely new clock as to when the commission is required to take action. So the if it is determined by the mayor or or Marcia that that the application does not include all of the information that's required, then the code requires that the borough notify the applicant about the very, you know, the deficiencies that occur so that they have an opportunity to correct them. And it is it is not at all unusual for borough land use departments to work rather closely with applicants to ensure that they have all the information that's required, right? Because it it may be that an individual submits a site plan that does technically meet all those requirements, but it doesn't do so in a way that's easy for commission members to track. So in those instances, the mayor or Marcia might might determine, well, you know, that doesn't really have all the information for the commission. So please make this minor modification to the site plan so that we're able to, you know, confirm what you're requesting on paper. So once the application is deemed to be complete by the borough, the code provides that it it will be scheduled for consideration at the Planning Commission's next scheduled regular meeting. Okay, so that in my mind, that that can provide some tricky timing depending upon how soon to the next regularly scheduled meeting, an application is determined to be complete. But one thing to keep in mind is that even when you have these provisions of code where they very, you know, they they specify a date certain for borough action in response to a permit. If it's not going to provide the borough enough time to provide everything to the commission, one thing that you can always do is just reach out to the applicant and get them to stipulate to something else. So for example, if you get an application and, oh, my gosh, it's deemed to be complete just a couple of days before the next regularly scheduled commission meeting, but that doesn't permit enough time to to meet the notice requirements. Then in those instances, the mayor or Marcia can reach out to the applicant and say, well, we can't do it by the next regularly scheduled meeting, but how about we have a special meeting about it? So there's a lot of opportunities in there to to work around very specific dates, so long as the applicant agrees with that. So now I just wanted, we've talked about the application process and a lot of that happens behind the scenes. You won't, you won't really hear about that. That won't be anything that comes under your notice right away. That's going to be something that's dealt with internally. What really concerns you is what you have to do as commissioners in response to a completed application that comes before you for a decision. The the code provides that you are required to conduct two public hearings regarding each application. The clerk issues a public notice regarding the application in the public hearings by posting it in at least three public places. And this notice requirement comes from a section of that code that refers back to the borough's charter that provides a definition for what it is to publish something. So so that applies for the notification requirements in these instances. So what happens before, you know, between the time that the application is deemed to be complete and the time of the meeting is that the administration will put together a staff report to the commission that includes a variety of of things. First of all, a summary of the application where if it's not clear on the application form itself, it's put in plain English to you, what exactly is being asked for and what those implications will be and which provisions of code are implicated. Some sort of analysis of the application's merits in light of the standards for the approval that are set forth in the code, which we'll we'll go over in just a moment. But also, and most importantly, a recommendation from staff regarding whether it believes that the commission should grant the permit. And if so, what conditions should be attached to it as a condition of approval? Administration will also prepare a proposed resolution for the for the commission's consideration that will be circulated to you prior to the meeting as part of your packet. At the actual meeting, the public hearings, the commission is charged with considering whether to grant the application and whether or not those conditions that have been recommended by staff or additional conditions that you believe are necessary based upon the totality of the circumstances and the facts that are presented to you should be imposed. One thing that, you know, to keep in mind is that the real purpose of these commission meetings, in addition to just having an open discussion among commissioners regarding what you believe to be in the best interests of the borough when it comes to this specific application for a conditional use permit, is that it it provides both the applicant as well as the as borough staff, right? And also any interested parties to voice their opinions to the commission regarding what they think that the commission should do in those instances, so that you can take that and also integrate that into your analysis as you reach your decision. And, you know, I I placed in here a very a point that says that during that time the commission is permitted and you really should ask direct questions related to that application as part of your process to the applicant, to borough staff and and other administrative members who've been asked to speak, as well as to the interested parties who may come out either in support of the application or may have concerns about the application. And finally, what will, you know, it it will ultimately fall on you to make a decision regarding that conditional use permit application. The code requires that the written decision, that there must be a written decision, number one, and then it must be issued within 30 days of the date of the final public hearing that you have regarding the application. It it's important to note very specifically that it it must be a written decision in these instances. Sometimes that written decision could simply be the resolution that has been submitted to you that you enact, you know, with or without amendments. The other way that you can do it, though, is to take the matter under advisement, right? And instead of issuing a decision right there in the moment on the record at the end of the hearing, recess, close the hearing, and then convene a deliberation meeting among commissioners regarding the application so that you can take some time in more complicated matters. And frankly, when you look at the the types of conditional uses that the borough has identified, all of those are relatively, well, they're they're either large scale developments. They are developments that have some kind of potential for environmental implication. Or they are developments that implement or that affect, you know, ways of living for neighboring properties. So in many cases, it is commissioners find it very useful to really take their time so that they can consult legal counsel if that's something that you need to do, for example. Now, we're going to talk just a little bit about the the findings that you must find. Anytime that the commission decides that it does want to grant a conditional use permit, it has to find some very specific things. It has to find number one, that that conditional use, if granted, will preserve and will not detract from the value, character, and integrity of the surrounding area. Now, that is a loaded question in my mind. Because, I mean, it it calls into question three, three things, right? The value, number one. So the commission is required to make some kind of determination of value and that it the effects of that conditional use will not detract from that value, but as well with the character and the integrity of the surrounding area. So thi- this is one of those things that during a hearing, you will want to ask very specific questions about what the values are of surrounding properties, right? About what the implications will be to discuss even the aesthetic impacts of things, right? Because these things can have effects on those on the on those three key issues. In addition, you have to find that if you grant that permit, it's not going to be harmful to the public health, safety, and welfare. And again, that's a it's a pretty loaded question and it requires a lot of searching on your part to ensure that you are able to, in good faith, make that finding. In addition, you also have to, you have to find that there is on that site plan and according to the conditions that you decide to impose upon that permit, sufficient setback, lot area buffers, or other safeguards to to ensure that the first two standards that are noted there have been met. So, you know, for example, and if you were to find that you're doing some kind of gravel extraction on private property, that's a conditional use permit that's been then been submitted to you. That does have public health, safety, and welfare implications potentially, as well as implications on value, character, and integrity. So if you look at us, if you look at a site plan and you look at that and you say, well, you know, if if we grant it just how they've plotted it out there, it could detract from the value. However, if we require them to keep some kind of buffer you know, whether that be a fence or some kind of vegetation, that will that will alleviate any kind of negative impact. So that's just an example of of a finding along that third line. The commission is also required to find that the applicant has submitted enough evidence to show that they have met all applicable and state federal permitting requirements. And again, a lot of the different developments that are listed as conditional uses in the borough are the types of developments that do require a variety of state and federal permits in each case. So I I encourage you to keep that in mind, you know. Anytime that you have anything to do, you know, with a pipeline, with some kind of energy generation hazardous waste. I mean, it's any variety of state and federal agencies that are involved. So that that is a question that that must be asked and you must have enough evidence before you to find that in good faith. But final, finally, you have to find that the conditional use fulfills all the other requirements of the applicable chapter, which is chapter nine fifteen of the of the Borough Code, but also that it's consistent with the borough's comprehensive plan. And I'm sure you're all intimately familiar with the borough's comprehensive plan. I took an opportunity to to look over that plan because as commissioners, especially when it comes to executing your duties as quasi judicial decision makers, the comprehensive plan is your go to because that is where every one of your decisions starts and stops. Because the law does not permit you to make decisions that are inconsistent with that comprehensive plan. So I encourage you all to, you know, really, really search that plan and look it over when you have some free time. And I'd say even to schedule some time to go over it a couple of times regularly to make sure that you're able to point to very specific places in the comprehensive plan that support your decision and your findings. So after the commission reaches a decision and issues it in written form, the next step is to issue the permit in the case that that you find in favor of the applicant. The permit is required by code to incorporate a number of things. First of all, it must reflect every single one of the conditions that you've imposed as commissioners in your decision making process. It has to include a final site plan, which is a plan that conforms with the conditions that you've imposed, not the one that they've provided initially, if there's any difference between the two. Some kind of description of the permit's timeframe because sometimes conditional use permits will have temporal restrictions. You will say you are able to operate this, but it must be for a certain period of time. Your permit expires at the end of this time on this date certain, and after that you have to reapply. So and then in addition, it has to include any kind of setback and buffer requirements that you that you impose because, as I mentioned before, those are two of the primary ways in which the commission can find some balance between the potential for negative impacts and then preserving the value and character and integrity of surrounding properties. Now, you'd think in in a perfect world that the commission's job is done when you've issued a permit or you've decided not to issue a permit. But there is a whole other layer to the commission's authority and that is in enforcement of conditional use permits. The code provides that in in the event that a per- a permittee fails to follow your conditions or to otherwise adhere to any of the standards that have been imposed by your code, the mayor has authority to take various forms of enforcement action. The very initial phase of it is a notice of violation, which is essentially a letter that goes out to the permittee that says, look, these were the conditions of your permit, this is what that means, this is what it says. These are conditions that have that are occurring on your property in your operation of this conditional use, they're in violation of that permit. You have X number of days to come into compliance. And we're going to come take a look to confirm it. But if you don't comply with this and we don't But if you don't comply with this and we don't hear from you, then we're going to move on to the next phase, which is a suspension typically. And in that instance, again, it would be another notice that goes out to the permittee that says, hey, we, you know, we we discussed this with you. We've given you an opportunity to respond and to come into compliance, you failed to do so, so we are effectively suspending your permit. You have to cease operations until such time that you come into compliance. And finally, if that doesn't work, then the the ultimate step is revocation of that permit. Now. The code provides, and this is the way that it is in most, you know, municipalities, that. Any type of enforcement action that's taken by the mayor. To enforce a conditional use permit can be appealed to the planning commission as a second level of administrative review. In this instance. It's a little bit, it it's very much like the initial permitting process in the sense that you. Are conducting a quasi judicial proceeding, but it it's different in the sense that it's more adversarial. Because you have a party who's before you that is arguing that a permit should be, or that, you know, a violation has occurred. That a suspension is appropriate or that a revocation is appropriate. And then you have a party who's saying, no, that's not, it's not appropriate, and here's why. In those instances. Individuals who have received permits do have a legal right to be represented by counsel. They have a a right to present evidence on their behalf and support of their position, including witness testimony. And that means that if they put on a witness to provide testi- you know, testimonial evidence to the commission regarding their position. That means that the other side hasn't a a right to cross examine that witness. So that, you know, so it can begin to look a little bit like a courtroom. Because you are in in essence acting as judges, you're arbiting this decision. Just as before, you have the right to ask any questions. And you are again required to issue a written decision within thirty days of that public hearing. So that was just my overview of the the conditional use permitting process. It 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 was meant to be a refresher course. But I'll I'll pause right now if you have any questions about that process and.
I have some questions.
Sure.
Okay, so. So I think you answered this. It it seems like it's a pretty quick, pretty, pretty fast. Process, how much time is there and is there enough time, like for example, if. Some kind of environmental impact study or something like that needs to be done?
Well, no, I think that that's a wonderful question, and I think it's particularly pertinent because of your location. And the the kinds of. The kinds of large scale developments that find that location attractive. That there will often be environmental applications, so in in discussing the timeframe. As I mentioned before. There is. There is a number, there are a number of things that you can do just in negotiating with the applicant, number one. So you do have these set time periods, but you can always go back to the applicant and say, look, here's the thing. You know, one of, we need some more information from you, so that means we need some more time. And it kind of ties back to whether or not the application is complete in the totality of the circumstances. The other thing though is, in most instances, if an environmental impact study has not been completed as part of the application process. Because typically with any kind of federal or state, well, I'd say mostly federal, but a lot of state permits as well. They do require an environmental impact study and they're they're required to provide evidence that they've complied, you know, with those other permitting processes to you. But. That does not go to say that there might be something that comes before you, that you have genuine, good faith concerns. Create the possibility of adverse environmental effects that necessitate an environmental impact study. And my answer to you about that would be, it would mean a denial of a permit. And saying, look, we're going to give you another opportunity to apply, but we're going to need an environmental impact study and here's why.
Okay.
So I'm sorry if that was a really long way of answering it.
No, that makes sense, okay. This is a question that. Might have to do with the next portion, but. With a lot of these things, I would hope that we could do a site visit, but does that impact? How does that impact our, you know, our ex parte. Requirements and that kind of stuff.
That is a very advanced question. I'm sorry.
So maybe that would come up in the in the second half, maybe you could cover that.
Yeah, you know, and I I I will, I actually very specifically cover that, because that is, that is an issue that comes up time and time again. With planning commissioners, because here's, here's the reality, folks. You live here, th- these are your communities, these are things.
But I don't know every step of this borough.
Oh, of course, no, of course not, but you might know where it is. You know, like you might, you might know where it is, you just might not be familiar with it, so I understand how. Because what would I do as a regular citizen? If I'm not on a commission, what would I do? If I'm interested in what's going on somewhere, I'm going to drive by it. You know, I'm going to drive by that because I'm a concerned citizen, I'm going to go take a look. But as I'll explain in more detail later, that is just something that you never can do. As commissioners, when you have a permitting application that's before you. And it seems counterintuitive, right? Because there might be instances where you have a development that's happening somewhere along a way that you drive every day. Right, so I'm not, I'm not saying that if you drive by a proposed site. You have to turn your head and put on blinders and things like that, but what I'm saying is that. What you see there cannot affect your decision making process unless very specific procedures. For a site visitor followed that we'll go over.
Cool, alright. Can I keep asking questions?
Absolutely, yeah, anyone, please.
Okay, so, so when you say, like during the pers- the initial. Application review in the, in the first, in the public hearings. We can ask direct questions, so that means that like any public that comes. To that, that's not part of the applicant. They could. We could actually, it's, it's not just like a public comment at that point, it's like, we can talk to them. More openly, is that what you're saying?
Well, um, I I think that there's a, there's a fine line. Typically, how, if we're talking about members of the public, right, non-parties, but a member of the public who comes. Typically, they are treated as individuals who are making public comments. So like an assembly meeting or any other kind of commission or board, municipal board. Typically, there'll be a sign in sheet, right, where they sign in their intent to to speak. And even people who don't sign in, there'll be a moment where the clerk asks if there's anyone else who hasn't signed in, who wants, you know, to to speak to the commission. During the moment that they're speaking, yeah, absolutely, I mean, you have the opportunity to to pose questions. There can be a dialogue that occurs. But I I want to just emphasize that. To to keep things clean, it's best to to ensure that those questions only occur during. The the time where they're recognized by the chair, you know, as giving the public comments. So there might be instances where, you know, someone makes a public comment. And it doesn't really strike you as important or interesting at that moment, I mean. I don't mean that in a derogatory way, but I mean that it's not pertinent to the question before you. And then three people down the line, someone makes a comment that makes that old one kind of interesting again. Right, and maybe that bears some more exploration, it's kind of difficult to go back. Right, to to, it's kind of difficult to go back into into request that the other person. Speak again, because there's a line between being the decision maker and being an advocate for a position. So you just, you you just really, it's good to try to get all your questions out, but you do have a lovely way.
Okay.
Hey, Kestlin, can I, uh, it's Eric, can I jump in on?
Sure, go ahead.
Hey, sir, I wanted to ask the question based on just what we talked about, public comment. Just the quick scenario would be like, application looks good, not violating anything that we can see, it's in line with the. The planning commission document. If there's overwhelming public testimony against it, what is that threshold? So let's say, and and I would go with the scenario of a standard planning commission meeting where nobody shows up. And then let's say, I I'm just going to use marijuana as an example, pick anything, right, gravel pit, whatever, I'll use gravel pit. Gravel pit comes up and thirty people show up and say, we don't want this in our area. What, i- i- is there a set threshold, what what is the. Guidance we should go by to weigh that public comment into our decision making and say, okay, hey, we've had thirty people show up and now maybe this isn't a. We shouldn't go ahead with it.
No, I mean, that's a really good question, because you know, the the reality is that you occupy. You're not, you're not elected officials, right, you're appointed officials, but you're political officials nonetheless, right? So. I I I think that it is important that. When you have thirty people, when you have an overwhelming group of people that come out in opposition to a proposed use. It's important to pay attention to what they're saying. But that being said, if their, if their opinion is based solely upon politics and it's not based upon. The standards that are established in your code, right? How do, how do I, I'm going to put this in a different way, just because. A proposed use is politically unpopular, does not make it impermissible, right? And so. Really, where you have to go back to are the requirements that you are required to find in order to grant. And your comprehensive plan. You know, you, i- i- if if someone, if everyone comes out and they say, look, we can't do that because. It is so flat, there's no trees over there, if there was a gravel extraction thing, it's going to kick up dust, it's going to, it's going to. Really negatively impact our lives as property owners in sur- in the surrounding area. That's something that has support. But if someone says, I just, you know, it's just going to annoy me, you know, it's just, it, I'm not going to like it. That doesn't really have a lot of weight in in my mind, but it might be different for you as commissioners.
So, so in the process, there's, since there's two public hearings. If there's like a lot of people that just say generally, we don't like this at the first one, could we like? Like as a ending comment or something, say. There's another public hearing and we'd like to hear suggestions of, or or more. Substantial, I don't know, something.
Absolutely, oh, absolutely, and I think that that's a wonderful idea to say, you know. As you summarize the close of the session, the public hearing, and you say, we've received all this information. And all the commit, I'm not sure exactly how you administer your your commission meetings, but it's not unusual during a quasi judicial. Proceeding to close it where every commissioner has an opportunity to, you know, give comments at the end, just closing comments. During that portion, I think I see it as appropriate to say, look, we've had a lot of people come out in opposition, but. I'm just telling you as a commissioner, I don't see a lot of meat, you know, and and what's been submitted, so, you know, maybe at the next meeting. There there'll be additional evidence and we encourage people if they think that they have additional. Evidence that goes toward these requirements to come out and and to to give that to us.
Okay, good.
Any other questions from anyone else?
Yeah, I I have a question. What about, I mean, we know we're going to have a a hearing, a adversarial hearing on a, on a, an issue. Uh, what about, uh, talking between commissioners and other people prior to that meeting? And then considering only the the actual evidence that's being presented, not the. Hearsay and opinion.
Yeah, you make a really, really good point, and that once again goes to the question of expert, the the problem of expertise contacts. Right, because what. And just to give you a little preview, because I'm going to go over expert, experte contacts in detail in this next section. Commissioners are not, you are one hundred percent not permitted. To consider any evidence or information that you have come to or that you, that you are aware of. That relates to that permit, that you came into possession of outside of the hearing, right? If it's not before you in the commission, if it's not in the packet and the evidence before you, you are not allowed to consider it. Unless it has been somehow disclosed at the hearing on the record. Okay, so, and this can be a real problem, especially in communities that are more tight knit. Because you might run into someone. You know, and they know you're on the commission and they know about this permit, and it might even be the applicant. Who walks up to you and says, hey, you know, well, what, I mean, what do you think about this application? Think it's going to go through, you know, because, look, I I already submitted my application and everything, but let me tell you a little extra stuff. I mean, those conversations are one thousand percent disallowed. And they can't occur, and I'm going to go over some strategies with you of like how to disengage from them, you know? Um, and what to do if they happen, you know, how how to remedy it so it doesn't become a problem.
One more question. When the, and under the conditional uses, the things that need to be fulfilled, that's following. Title nine point one five and the comprehensive plan, what about the land management plans that affect that area too?
Oh, that, no, absolutely, I mean, if you have, if you've adopted land management plans, then those come into play as well.
Yeah, they weren't listed on the list. And in in my past experience, authorized agent for a landowner. Uh, maybe a, a landowner may be a corporation and usually a corporate resolution. Designating who is the re- responsible person or the the designated person to deal with this. Solves that problem, and the other, other than that, owners and the owners or the owner's attorney. Would be the only other people that I could see that should qualify to represent the owner's position.
Yeah, no, I mean, I, you're, you're absolutely right, I think that there. The long and the short of it is that if a person does not have some kind of. Ownership interest in a property that is greater than just a leasehold interest, right? Then they have to be designated in in some sort of official document or by virtue of the position they hold. So there needs to be some kind of authorization.
So, uh, and one other thing is in deliberations where you might have to. Close a meeting temporarily and do something else, what's your position on. Open meetings and closed door meetings for situations like that.
No, that's a, another thing, yeah, if if, if you decide as a commission that you are not prepared to. Issue a decision right there in the meeting on the record and that you'd instead like to recess into deliberations. That is excused, that deliberations do not constitute meetings for the purposes of the Alaska Open Meetings Act. So they are allowed to occur in private. And they are allowed, I mean, the documents that you generate that are pre-decisional are all confidential. And it permits you the ability to truly explore and speak. Frankly, with your fellow commissioners and reaching the decision.
Got a couple more questions.
Sure.
Um, does anyone have the definition at hand of a large scale commercial development? I know that's one of the, the possible conditional, the things that would be a conditional use, but I can't remember. I know we talked about it a long time about what that definition was.
Hey, Kestrel, I thought it was a, one of the things was a twenty-five thousand square foot building, I believe, was one that I remember, but Clay, you can, you can check me on that. I see you looking at the rig.
You're muted.
Sorry, I don't have it in front of me, um, but yeah.
I've got it.
Great, thanks, Amber.
Um, it's, let me turn my screen so I can read it better. Um, large scale commercial business means a commercial operation whose total ground floor gross area, including buildings, display area and parking, is equal to or exceeds forty thousand square feet, comma, requires a class A or B waste disposal system, comma, and/or requires an Alaska waste, uh, water permit for more than twenty-five hundred gallons per day. Large scale commercial does not include agricultural uses.
Perfect, alright, okay.
Thank you, Amber.
Alright, um, another question. So one of the, can, one of the things that we, that the applicant needed to have to, to satisfy the application was that all the state and federal permits were in order. So is that saying that they've gotta file all the state and federal permits before they go through this process?
Well, um, I'm sorry.
I mean, that, that could cost a lot of money that they're investing in this before they even know if it's something that, um, the community's going to be okay with.
Oh no, you're, you're absolutely right. And I think that, that, I think that there is some flexibility there because the issue, in addition to the cost that can be incurred just to be told no, you know, by a borough, um, in addition to that, there's a chicken and egg issue, right? Because sometimes a federal or a state permit can be held up on, you know, giving assurances that everything is in, in line with the borough, you know, that everything's taken care of. So I think that there are, especially with federal and state permits, there is a lot of lead up, you know, to the granting of those permits. Where they get, they get, um, prior to actual issuance, they get a go ahead, like a green light. You know, everything's good so long as you get everything from the borough, right? So I think that those are things that you're just gonna have to take a look at in the moment, you know? Like where exactly are you? Are you gonna be denied the permit? Now, the other thing is that a condition that you can place is that if they don't have the permits, that they, they get them before anything happens. So that's another valid condition that you can place on there in an instance where they can't quite get it until they get something from you.
Okay. Um, and then my last question that I have on this section is, um, is the timeline of enforcement steps. So we've had some things where we wished we had some kind of enforcement in the past and it drug out for years. Is, is this something that we can like say, the, the first step and then like a month later, the next step, and then a month later, the next step? Like kind of go pretty quickly through these steps of enforcement?
Yeah, and you know, I didn't, I didn't concentrate so much on the enforcement portion of this. So I don't have the information right before me right now. But one of the things that we, our firm needs to work with the, with the mayor and with Marsha on is really outlining the administrative processes, you know, to make sure that all of it makes sense. Because the last thing that you want is for there to be an enforcement action that's required, but it languishes. You know, it just kind of, nothing ever happens with it. There are a lot of strategies that we have worked with municipalities to develop that have worked out really, really well for making sure that there is a consistent approach, that it happens in a relatively short period of time. And also from the front end that we're encouraging compliance instead of moving on to enforcement so as to minimize the reach of government, you know? So, you know, we, we think that there's a happy balance, but we will be working with the borough more on that. That being said, it may be that in our further discussions with the borough that we decide that, you know, the borough decides that maybe some further modifications to the ordinances need to be made in order to, you know, make sure that everything plays out quickly. And in those instances, of course, it'll come back before you for comments and consideration.
Okay.
Any other questions before I move on to that next section? Alright then, well, let's go. Now, um, I am, look, I am a law geek and I apologize for that because quasi judicial decision making is like one of the things that I really, really love. Because probably because, I mean, well, I'm sure it's because I'm a lawyer and involved in the judicial system. But I think that it is such a great opportunity for individuals to not only be very directly involved with, uh, very important decisions that are being made in their communities, but also just to give you an opportunity to experience what it's like to be up on that dais making those decisions. So, okay, I'm just gonna go through this really quickly. There, there are three main classes of decision making that any kind of, uh, administration makes, right? The first is an administrative decision, then legislative decisions, and then these quasi judicial decisions that we've been talking about. Now administrative decisions, they're their own animal and they're exactly what you would think they are. They're those that are made by managers on a managerial basis and day-to-day operation, okay? So these are general operational decisions. These are what we, we call first level decisions, right? And so putting it into context of a conditional use permit application, it is the borough's initial decision that a permit application is incomplete or vice versa, that it is complete. That is an administrative decision that's made in the conditional use permitting process that will happen kind of behind the scenes, right? The next is something that I'm sure you're very familiar with as commissioners, but there are these legislative decisions and it's, these are decisions that make or interpret borough policy in a way that affects all individuals or very specific classes of individuals equally, more or less, right? So you're not, you're not, you're enacting ordinances that apply to everybody or recommendate, you're issuing resolutions that recommend the adoption of ordinances that are meant to have general applicability. That's a legislative decision. You're making decisions about how properties should be zoned or how they should be rezoned. And I know that zoning is new to your borough, so this hasn't been something that's really been implicated very much. But a lot of municipalities, there's quite a few zones. So the decisions about whether it should be this or that zone, that's legislative. These are not subject to the constitutional requirements of procedural due process, which we're gonna go into a little bit later. But essentially procedural due process, which is guaranteed to everybody under the federal and Alaska constitutions, says that when government is dealing with them, you're gonna do so in a way that provides them a full and fair opportunity to make their case. Now, quasi judicial decisions, what makes them different from legislative decisions is that you are, when you're sitting and considering something in a quasi judicial capacity, you are examining the law, you're examining the rules and the standards and you're applying them to one person for the purpose of determining what their rights are. Okay, and so that's, that's what a judge does, right? So you are acting as semi-judges in this instance. So you are required to abide by very specific conditions. These are any kind of permitting decision that you have, where you have standards. Because how, how these permitting pro, programs are set up is that if a person can prove that they're entitled to it, then they're entitled to, to being granted it. Plating decisions are the same kind of way. And then also determining whether, you know, penalties that are imposed, like the enforcement actions, these are all quasi judicial because they affect an individual and not everybody. So these are the most important legal principles that attach to quasi judicial decision making. And the first is what I just went over a little bit, the constitutional guarantee of due process. Now, we've had two commissioners who have already very wisely brought up the problem of ex parte contacts, you know, because this is something that, uh, it is, it is, um, it's very common for, for commissioners to find themselves in circumstances where ex pa, ex parte contacts can occur. And it's important to know how to identify them and how to deal with them because they are one hundred percent not allowed. Then also we have to deal with issues of conflicts of interest and what we're talking about is financial conflicts of interest. And then also, again, we've, we've, we've had some discussion of the Open Meetings Act because that does apply to certain portions of your quasi judicial proceedings. So just to go over due process a little bit, like I said, it's guaranteed by the US and the Alaska constitutions. It's made of, it's made up of very, of two separate components, but they're, they're very closely related. And I mentioned one, it's procedural due process, right? And that is just saying, hey, you're gonna have a fair process that's given to you. We promise that it's going to be, it's going to be fair and equal in terms of how it moves forward. The other is substantive due process, which essentially, it, it means that, uh, the decisions that you make are going to be fair in their substance. So I just talked about substantive due process a little bit. It substantive due process typically attaches to instances in which you're making legislative decisions. So it doesn't really apply very much to the quasi judicial avenue. But it just means that anytime that you, for example, decide to adopt a resolution that recommends that a particular piece of legislation be enacted by the, the assembly, that you've done so in a way that's fair, that there is some fundamental fairness to the way that you decided to reach the particular words that you did. Then we move on to the procedural due process, which as I mentioned, it's just, it's all about what kind of proceedings you provide. Now, it guarantees that no person can be deprived of life, liberty or property without being given a, you know, a fair and full opportunity to make their case. Due process requires three things at a very minimum in all cases. It requires that an individual receive reasonable notice of action that is going to be taken that will affect them as, as property owners, that they be given a fair hearing regarding, uh, their rights to their property that may be impacted by the actions that you take as a quasi judicial body. And they have to be given an opportunity to speak and to provide the evidence that is necessary for them to prove their point to you about why you should decide in their favor. Now, you know, part of, part about being a law nerd is that, um, is really my infatuation with the subject of ex parte contacts. Because first of all, like I said, it's, they're, they're very, um, they're very hard to put your finger on in some instances and hard to identify, but they're also so, so, so important. And this is, and I'm gonna tell you, this is where most commissions get in trouble. I mean, this is where a lot of the problems occur, okay? And so I like to spend a little bit more time here because I think that this is really going to be relevant to, uh, to, to your positions. Now, we've talked about due process a little bit. It requires that you be totally unbiased, okay? When you're making a decision, you have to make so, you have to make it in a, in a manner that is completely level-headed, that does not, you know, favor one person over another. It's based solely upon the law and your interpretation of that law when applied to the facts and the evidence that, that is before you, okay? So, uh, the legal system has long recognized from, you know, since the beginning of the common law, that, um, due process, a person's rights to due process can be severely impaired and hugely violated when individuals who are in quasi judicial decision-making capacity have contacts with, with either other individuals or other facts, okay? Other evidence, even if it's not a person, just evidence that is relevant to the proceeding, that is, that is pending before you at that moment. And here's why. It's because it runs and it has an inherent risk of prejudicing your decision, right? Which means that you come into that hearing with an idea based upon information that only you know. I mean, only you know it, not everyone has access to it. And certainly not all the public has access to it because you've either had conversations with people outside of a hearing or you've gone on your own fact-finding kind of, uh, expedition to try to, because you're really interested, you know, commissioners, why they get in trouble is because they really wanna do their job right. And so they do these things, um, trying to do research on their own. But it, the problem is it gives them information that is relevant to the, to the question before them that not everyone has. So there's a risk that you're never able to reach the right decision as a body, right? But here's the, here's the issue. Even if you were completely unbiased by any kind of, let's say that you did have a conversation with an individual where they said, let me give you some additional facts that might not be before you. Or let me make my case to you in private. Or, um, here, here's a, here, here's a scientific study, you know, that, that I think is relevant to the kind of, you know, uh, development that they wanna do there. Even if after reading all that, you're not biased, the problem is that it sure looks to other people like you probably are. Does that make sense? That if, if you have access to information that nobody else does and you've had conversations with individuals and then come into a hearing and, and made a decision and people know that those have occurred or it comes to light afterward that those have occurred, it sure looks that there's some bias or something not right has occurred. And we call that in law, the appearance of impropriety. And so the law does not permit these sorts of judicial proceedings, including quasi judicial proceedings, to have the appearance of impropriety. So there, there are way, there are things that have to be done if you have these sorts of contacts that we're gonna go over a little bit. So some examples, like we, we mentioned, discussions about individuals, either the applicant or other community members or even borough staff members. Because in these instances, borough staff members are, they're a party to the proceeding, right? So if, if you receive, um, you know, uh, if there's an application that's coming down the line and you've received your packet, you're not really allowed to just call on your own individually and talk to, uh, you know, borough staff members about what they think should be done and how, you know, the, the issues at play. Those conversations have to occur at the hearing, okay? Because otherwise it's an ex parte contact.
So I have a question. So I generally talk to the mayor before things. So we could talk about like the process so that I can lead things properly, just not the content.
That's exactly right. And I think that this is something that Amber will, Amber has the same kind of, um, you know, Amber has the same kind of rule when it comes to the Open Meetings Act and how she communicates with assembly members, right? Because, you know, here's the deal. Assembly members aren't ever allowed to chat amongst themselves about business that's before them outside of a meeting, um, in, in many circumstances. But they are free to talk about administrative matters. So scheduling matters, the order of, you know, how, let's say that someone else has to chair the meeting, you know, and they need to talk to the mayor and say, hey, I've never chaired a meeting. I really need some pointers, Mr. Mayor. You know, how, how, what do I do if this situation arises? You know, how, what do I do if this situation arises, or this situation arises? So long as it doesn't include a discussion of the merits of the case, right? Another very common ex parte contact is a site visit or an inspection of the property when not all the parties are present. And this is, this is completely disallowed. It's been, it's been addressed by the Alaska Supreme Court in other contexts. But the reality is this, is that if you, as a commissioner, believe that you would benefit from walking that property and seeing it firsthand, and there are probably going to be many cases in which you, you do think that, instead of going to the property and doing so on your own, request a site visit, okay? This is a formal meeting of the planning commission. It will be publicly noticed, it'll be noticed to the parties, the proceeding. Everyone will show up together, you'll walk it together, you know? And so that's, excuse me, that's the way to properly handle, you know, a perceived need to see the site.
And can I? So, so another thing during that kind of a site visit, conversations amongst the parties would need to be very closely controlled. I mean, like, we can't just have, you know, like buddies just walking along together and sharing information that not everybody's hearing.
Listen, I'm totally impressed by the questions I'm getting here. These are super nuanced questions and they're like 1,000, I mean, they're, they're right on. That is exactly right.
Well, because we just had, we just had a ton of site visits and we had conversations like that. So I can totally see those kind of conversations happening when we're just like strolling along looking at a site.
Here's the issue, it's a meeting, right? And there have to be, there have to be, there has to be a record of the meeting. Every meeting has to be accompanied by some kind of written record. And usually with those meetings, it's minutes, okay? So you do have to be very careful about having conversations while you're there. And what I mean by that are two, two primary things to keep, well, I'll also, I'm gonna say three primary things to keep in mind. Number one, if possible, drive to the site separately, right? Because if you have a group of people, I mean, that means it could be perceived as a meeting. I'll just put it that way for the Open Meetings Act, if you're all like into the same van going somewhere to a site. And it can't be a meeting, right? Because the public's not in there with you. The second part is, any kind of conversations that you have there should be minimal. And they, they should be done very openly so everyone can hear anything that is said by a person. No side conversations occurring between commission members or between commission members and, commission members and members of the public or administration or the parties or anything like that. Everything that is said really must be all stated to everyone. And number three, you're gonna wanna keep it minimal because if you say anything, you've gotta keep a record. You have to keep minutes. How, how can you, how can you keep minutes, you know, at a site visit effectively? You have to have someone there to do it, right? And so at the end, you have to keep your discussions very, very small because a person's gotta keep up with that, right?
Oh, I have a question about some of this. If you, we're a large borough, but we don't have very many people. And we have a lot of interreaction outside of being part of the borough government. We probably know some things that might come up in some of these quasi judicial hearings. If we do have some information that is not presented, should we recuse ourselves? Well, we excuse ourselves from that meeting.
Yeah.
Which is likely to happen. We're likely to run into that situation.
Yeah, no, and you're right, you're right. You are likely to run into the situation. I, I, in fact, I, I promise you that each of you will at some point run into the situation where someone kind of comes up to you and offers you information or tries to engage you in that kind of discussion. And so I just moved on to the next slide because this, this addresses your question. And it's about, what do you do? Like, how do you cure that, right? What do you do? The very first thing is, I do not believe, the issue of recusal, that is, it's, it's kind of like the nuclear option, right? A recusal is not always necessary. In my mind, a recusal, an instance where a recusal might be necessary is if you had a conversation with a person and you told them how you intended to find on it, right? Because then you've already stated your position before the hearing and you're biased, you know? So that would be an instance where, yes, at the, at the, either prior to the hearing through the, you know, the clerk, or at the hearing itself before any business is taken up, you ask for a recusal and you explain why, you know? But in things that fall short of that, you know, where you've, you've, you have some kind of demonstrated bias, really, you can cure them by taking a couple of steps. Number one, disclosing the fact that you had some kind of ex parte contact, even if you think it was harmless, okay? Making sure that the clerk knows, because I'm telling you, the last thing that you want is for your clerk to be surprised by these sorts of things at a hearing because there are things that the clerk has to do to make sure that, that the clerk's office is prepared when these sorts of things happen. Second, disclose it at the hearing. Like I just said, when the hearing is convened, just explain what happened. Explain that you had a conversation with, for example, a, a member of the public or, or someone from a different jurisdiction and that they offered you an opinion or information on it that, that was offered as relevant to the question before you. And here's most important, this is what they said. Here is the information. I'm going to give this to you on the record right now, what they said to me. Because here's what that does. It gives that information suddenly to everybody before the decision is made. So you're able to kind of repair any damage that the ex parte contact had because now everyone's party to the information and no one has an unfair advantage over another. Does that make sense? There are other things that you can do, um, okay, go ahead.
Is there a, is there a procedural, like, how does that actually happen? Is there, is there something, it, it says, you say, prior to addressing any other matters. What does that look like?
So it would depend upon the, the agenda format that you eventually set up for your conditional use permitting. But here's what I'll tell you, I think that most commissioners, most commissions are best served if at the very front end of their agenda, they have an opportunity where the chair does a couple of things. Number one, says, Madam Clerk, have all the required public notices been issued? Okay, so getting some kind of, because if they haven't, then it's time to cancel the meeting, right? That's the very first thing. Number two, does anyone have a conflict of interest that they need to disclose, right? Because if someone does, good, let's, before we take up any business and they participate in any way, let's go ahead and get them recused or either decide that they don't have a conflict of interest and they can participate. And number three, has any, does anyone have any ex parte contacts to report? And so that gives an opportunity for people to come forward with all that before any of the matter begins, starts being discussed, before they participate in any kind of meaningful way. And one thing that I was going to say about, you know, the issue of disclosing ex parte contacts at the front end and the importance of stating exactly what was said, you know? And I'm just gonna give you an example that has to do with written documentation, okay? So there might be an instance where a commissioner gets an email from someone unsolicited, but it just goes to one commissioner that says, hey, here's some information you need to know about this conditional use permit application, and here's what I think about it. But, you know, you need to know this. It would be, the, the, the right thing to do in that instance is to declare it, I mean, let the clerk know. Say, by the way, I'm at the front end of this meeting, I'm gonna be declaring the fact that I received this email. And also, Madam Clerk, here's a copy of that email. Because if there's enough time, you have time to circulate that among the parties and to make it available to the public. If it's, if there's not enough time, then it gives, at least gives you enough time to distribute it in hard copy at the meeting to everybody, you know? Sometimes that information is so dense that it's too much, it's too much for a person to digest and respond to at that very same hearing, especially if it's a second hearing, you know, supposed to be your final hearing. In those instances, it would be appropriate for a commissioner to perhaps move for a continuance, to recommend that there be a continuance that in the interest, in the interest of fairness, so that everybody has an opportunity to review that information because it goes right to the heart of the application, you know, and clear it, clear it with the applicant. Because I, I guarantee if it's against the applicant's interests, they're gonna need a, a continuance. If it's against the borough's interests, I mean, the borough's gonna really want an interest or want a continuance in that instance to be able to respond. So the long and the short of it is that there are ways to cure those, those types of ex parte contacts. And you should every single time because the last thing that you want to do is to not disclose and for it to come out afterward because it can undo all the work that you did. Because in those instances, if it's appealed to the Superior Court, the Superior Court could very well say, we, we're gonna invalidate that action. We're gonna send it back and you have to do it all over again, so. So, you know, these are just some practical considerations, but I feel like we've talked about them a bit. Really, the key is to just avoiding them whenever you can. If someone tries to engage you in that kind of conversation, just explain to them, I'm sorry, I'm on the commission. This is a conversation I'm not permitted to have, excuse yourself from it. And instead, ask them to submit any comments to, in writing, to the commission as a whole, so to the clerk, you know? So that it can be provided as testimonial evidence at the hearing. So now that we've talked about the ex parte contacts, which is always to me the most exciting part of, of the training, we can talk about the boring Alaska Open Meetings Act. But no, I, I kid, it's, the Open Meetings Act is very, very important. I'm sure that as commissioners, you're, you're familiar with it to a large degree, but it does bear some discussion, especially since we have had a question that pertains to it. So, you know, it applies to the commission, you are a governmental body, you know? It applies, although it applies to the proceedings that you have. As I mentioned, there is one portion of your proceedings where it does not apply. It does not apply to you when you are in the process of deliberating in order to reach a final decision, okay? And so just to kind of parse it out a little bit so you understand how we get there. A meeting is defined as a gathering of members of a governmental body when more than three members or a majority of the members, whichever is less, okay? So whatever, whether it's three, this is a silly question for me to ask, how many members are on your commission?
Nine.
So there's nine members on your commission, so you're, you're, in that instance, if any three members of your commission were to gather together, right? And discuss or consider any kind of matter that you're empowered to act on, then that constitutes a meeting. And that means that it needs to be appropriately noticed and the public has to be permitted to attend and so forth. I mean, this will apply for, if you guys go out to lunch or coffee with each other, it applies to work sessions like these. It doesn't matter whether it's a formal or an informal gathering. If you, if three or more members of your commission are sitting together and you're talking about any matter that you're empowered to act on, that is a meeting and it has to be treated as such. And if it has not been publicly noticed, then it's, it violates the Open Meetings Act. Now, it's a little bit different whenever a decision making body does, the, the, the number increases for the, for the minimum members. But the thing that you have to always remember as well is that meetings don't even mean that you have to be in person. Serial communications that occur between members, if they involve a, you know, appropriate or if, if, if they involve the, the number of members necessary to implicate a meeting in person, those can constitute a meeting as well. So that means phone calls, you know, straw polls where a person calls around to other members of a board or commission and says, I mean, what, how are you gonna vote on this? You know, what do you think about that? And then that person calls the next person, that person calls the next person. Those, those can constitute meetings. You can only discuss the substantive matters upon which you are empowered to act in a properly noticed open meeting. But as we touched upon before, if you're just discussing procedural matters or just basic administrative matters, like what's the date, what's the time? How come I didn't get my packet? I'm missing this page. Those things can be done, you can have those conversations, right? So I talked to you a little bit about the importance of notice and reserving a time perhaps at the beginning of your agenda where you very specifically confirm that notice has been issued. I just wanted to chat a little bit about notice requirements in general, right? And what the boroughs are. So we mentioned before that the, the borough, just as a general matter, is required to give appropriate notice of any kind of public meeting. But what's a reasonable notice will depend upon the circumstances, okay? We know that you have to, you have to comply with the requirements of your borough charter, which provides a very specific definition of what constitutes publication for the purposes of noticing a meeting. But one thing that I want you to be aware of is that you are going to, in all likelihood, be faced with permit applications that involve matters of significant public concern, okay? Because that is the nature of what you signed up for. You know, these, the, 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 the conditional use permits that come before you are going to be about big projects that have tons of opposition, not just within the community, but from outside the community, from environmental groups, from, I mean, that's the nature of the beast, right? When you're dealing with projects that implicate very significant issues of public concern, I want to encourage you to give what we call super notice, okay? And that means take a little bit extra precaution when it comes to ensuring that everybody in the world knows that this meeting is happening at this date and this time. And that means maybe noticing it just a little bit early, right? Noticing it, taking more effort to notice it. But what will be reasonable is gonna depend upon the circumstances. And, and the reason that we give this advice is because there was an instance in which the Alaska Supreme Court addressed certain challenges that were brought by a citizens group against a government, I think it was a school district's meeting in which they decided to close a school, okay? And there, the court said, okay, fine, look, yes, we acknowledge, your code says this and you followed your notice procedures to a T. And that was perfect, but you know what? We're still gonna say that you didn't give adequate notice because the closure of a school is such a significant matter of public concern that you needed to give more. So I just offer that as just a general recommendation, but it is important. But it is important. Otherwise, the good rule of thumb is to just always follow your normal notice procedures. And like I mentioned before, at the beginning of the meeting, just confirm that all the notices have been issued. I'm, I'm not going to belabor you with the, you know, the, the sticks and bricks of what notices must include, but we're just going to say all the important information. I mean, time, place, who, you know, who's going to be there? What's the business? Okay, so we talked a little bit about the fact that deliberations do not themselves constitute meetings for the purposes of the Open Meetings Act. So you are permitted during those times to meet in private. You cannot meet with either of the parties. So that means you can't meet with a borough representative during your deliberations to assist you. You can't meet with the applicant or their representatives. The only people that you can really meet with is your attorney. You know what I mean? So that's something that if you've decided that you've need to recess into deliberations, into a deliberation period, because the issues are so complicated that it requires hashing out, that might be a good time to, to talk to the mayor about requesting, you know, some kind of assistance with the deliberations to address legal questions. Because not only are you called upon to interpret the requirements of your own borough code, but sometimes parties who are really strongly for or against something will pose like constitutional arguments and you're required to consider those as well. You know? So in any case, the other thing to keep in mind is that while you're in deliberations, you're going to take lots of notes. You know, you're probably going to send emails back and forth about this is how I feel about this, this is how I feel about that, based upon what we have. And probably you're going to be circulating a draft written decision, because you have to issue a written decision at the end of the period. Make, I just want you to be confident that those documents are confidential. They're pre-decisional documents. They are not subject to public disclosure. They are, they are part of your deliberative process, so they're privileged. And the policy behind that is because how are you ever going to reach a decision as a group if you're not able to communicate freely about what your thought process is based upon the facts? So I'm going to go over just financial conflicts of interest really quickly. I'm assuming that the commission, that you're aware of your, your duties to avoid conflicts of interest in the execution of your official duties as commissioners. What that means is that you have an absolute duty prior to participating in any matter that comes before you, to conduct some kind of self-searching process where you determine whether or not you have a substantial financial, financial interest in the matter, right? And if you do, that means that you have to ask to be excused from participating, right? And then this is the section of the borough's code that talks about the planning commission in general and the conflicts of interest. It says, if a planning commission member has a substantial financial interest in an official action, the planning commissioner, commission member shall declare that interest and ask to be excused from a vote on the matter. The procedures that are detailed in the procedure set forth for the assembly shall be followed in doing so. Now, it can be pretty difficult to determine exactly what a substantial financial interest is in a given situation, right? But you do need to be aware that sometimes they will exist in places where you might not initially see. So it is important to do the self-searching prior to taking action. But they can exist anytime that, you know, and any kind of individual who is a member of your family or a close business associate or your employer, they, they stand to experience some kind of financial gain or loss, depending upon the outcome of what action you take, right? Because the thought process there is that that does kind of place either some kind of direct pressure on you because you stand to benefit, or it puts some kind of indirect pressure upon you because someone you care about or who can affect you stands to either This section of the, the borough code that deals with how financial conflicts of interest, when substantial financial interests occur, it outlines a couple of instances. It's where they or a member of their immediate family individually, jointly, or in partnership with another have an interest in land or buildings other than their residence that will be affected by the voter action. That says affected, I don't know how that happened. I apologize for that. I, I, I might know a thing or two about ex parte contacts, but I guess, you know, not about how to spell affected. Also, they can exist when a commissioner or a member of the immediate family are party to or beneficiary of a contract for a sum of $1,000 or more that will be affected by the vote or the action. So you've set the threshold in the borough as $1,000 as the conflict of, as the amount where you or a member of your immediate family stands to benefit, right? That's what is going to trigger substantial financial interest that requires you to declare it. Or if you or a member of your family have any kind of interest in land or buildings that are going to be affected by your actions. Another one is where you have any kind of interest of $1,000 or more that's going to be affected at all by how you vote or the action that you take. Or if you hold a management position with an organization that has financial dealings of $1,000 or more, right? So, you know, we, we talked about how to deal with your conflicts of interest if and when they arise. Like I mentioned, the best practice is to just disclose them at the beginning of the meeting. Ask the chair to make a determination at that time about whether to excuse you from participation in that vote. In that instance, the chair, based upon what is discussed, will make a decision, right? Will either decide, yes, you have a conflict of interest that prohibits you from participating in this decision, so you will be excused from this. Or no, I don't see a conflict of interest based upon what you've said, so you have to participate, right? Now, so what happens if the rest of the commission doesn't agree, though? In those instances, your, the chair's decision can be overridden by a majority vote of the commissioners. That's just, that's, that, that is the, the procedures, that is the procedure that's been set up under Alaska law, just as a, as a check against the discretion of the chair in those instances. But what happens, what happens, though, if the chair has a conflict of interest? Who can tell me that? Like, who makes the decision? Well, in that instance, well, maybe this is a question for you. Do you have a second in command as the chair?
We have a deputy.
Okay. Well, in that instance, what you do is you take that gavel and you hand it over to the deputy. And then you disclose to the deputy and the deputy makes the decision. So that's how we deal with instances in which the chair has a financial conflict of interest to declare. So we're getting close to the end here. You guys have been so great and patient. But now we're going to talk a little bit about bias and the appearance of bias. And this has come into play a little bit with the issues of ex parte contacts, because it gives an appearance of impropriety. But it's important to understand that the concept of procedural due process requires, once again, that there be some kind of impartial tribunal, right? And that means that you, as commissioners, can't make your minds up before you have attended the proceeding and heard all the evidence that's been submitted to you. And it also means that you cannot be predisposed, predisposed to find one way or the other because of a personal bias that you have, right? Here, and, and this is what I was talking about, about instances in which courts have found an appearance of impropriety to be an invalidating factor. There's a very famous municipal land use zoning case called Baloo v Fairbanks North Star Borough. And there, the, the Alaska Supreme Court explained that a fair trial and a fair tribunal is a basic requirement of due process. This applies to administrative agencies, which adjudicate as well as to courts, okay? And you, as the commission, when you're acting like that, you're an administrative agency. Not only is a biased decision maker constitutionally unacceptable, but our system of law has always endeavored to prevent even the probability of unfairness. Okay? So what that means is that if, once again, it falls upon you as commissioners to make a decision before you take up any action about whether you do have some kind of bias that unfairly affects the way that you feel that you would vote on the issue. And not to put too fine a point on it, but that does not mean that just because you have beliefs, you know, that you have to throw all your beliefs out at the door, right? But what it does mean is that if you believe, if you don't think that you're able to sit in these, this sort of proceeding and hear all of the evidence and make a decision that is impartial upon the parameters that are in front of you, then maybe it is an instance in which you do have a bias that disqualifies you. Your beliefs do not have to be abandoned. They can inform your decision-making process, but your decision has to be based upon the factors that are set out in code, right? So just like a conflict of interest, right? If a person believes that they have some kind of bias, they should just state so. You know, toward the beginning of the meeting, they should say, well, look, here's the thing, I might not have a financial conflict of interest, but look, I, I feel that I might be biased or I might be perceived as biased, and so I ask to be excused from this, and here's why. So a decision can be made based upon all the, the information. So this is one of the last things that I'm going to talk about. There's, there's something in Alaska law called the rule of necessity. And it's, I mean, it, it's not, it's not often that it's called upon, but it's very important, and we'll go over it a little bit. So what happens when a majority of the seated members of a quasi-judicial body has a conflict of interest, has reported some kind of ex parte contact or has indicated some kind of bias, right? Because there are places where this happened, especially in smaller communities, where there's a land use question that, you know, a majority of the, that is the, involves the employer of a majority of the commissioners, right? If they don't have a quorum, then they can't take any action on it. So what happens? Well, in that instance, there's a doctrine of law called the rule of necessity that says that if everyone has a conflict of interest, you know, if, if, if the, the majority has a conflict of interest, then none of them are disqualified. Everyone gets to participate, even though they have one. Because otherwise, how would you ever get any business done, right? So the, the law does recognize that even where everyone has some kind of vested personal substantial financial interest, you've got to, the train's got to keep moving, you know? So it permits you to take action in those instances. Now, the last thing that I'm going to go over with you is just the sufficiency of findings. And due process also requires that you, as a commission, provide a reviewable record for the purposes of judicial review. Because if you don't provide a written record that is, clearly explains your decision, and it goes to the Superior Court, the Superior Court's going to say, I mean, too bad, you didn't do a good enough job. So I'm going to send this back down to you so you can do it all over again. So you only fulfill that obligation if you set forth a written decision that set, that provides specific reasons for the decisions that you made, right? Like, we find that it does not meet this condition because X, Y, and Z. And that you also make sure that there's, you know, that, and this falls upon the clerk, that there's good minutes, that the record that's developed of all the documents that are provided to you are all retained. That is the reviewable record that you're required to keep. So that is the conclusion of my presentation. And I know that was long and it was a lot of information, and I hope that it was, I just hope it was helpful, but I'm happy to entertain any questions that you have right now. Like I said, the purpose of this was just to provide you an overview of these overarching principles in the process in preparation for, you know, the boroughs, the mayor and the administration really refining the process from the administrative standpoint, but also getting you ready to think about those overarching questions that are, affect what you do when these come before you.
I have a kind of a comment, question.
Sure.
I, I noticed that this is being recorded. And in, in all the years I've been a planning commissioner, we have only had one quasi-judicial hearing scheduled, and the matter was resolved two days before the hearing. So we, in 25 years, basically, we have not gone through this process. But since this presentation is, is recorded, if and when, and it's a matter of when we run into one of these quasi-judicial hearings, how do you feel about us reviewing this presentation prior to that process starting, so that everything's fresh in our minds?
I mean, I think that's a great idea. I think that, I mean, I, I hope that you will, and I hope that you will take this PowerPoint presentation and, and keep it, you know, and, and be able to refer back to it. Like I mentioned before, we're, when, when it comes down to identifying the exact process that you'll take, I, I anticipate that what we may want to consider doing, and I leave this up to the chair and to the mayor, what we may consider doing is putting together some kind of hypothetical permit scenario and just kind of running through the motions, you know, with how that looks on your end, you know, so that you're comfortable. Because now that you do have these conditional use permitting processes that are set up, it, it may be more likely that you will find yourself in this role.
Yes, sir. Kind of a question also. Thank you for your time and this information. I'm sure it will serve us well in sometime in the future, like Steve mentioned. Can this material be made available to us either in print or Word document as some future reference, like Steve was getting at, and not just a recording?
Oh, absolutely. You know, the only thing I would ask is I, I would like to correct that miss, misspelled word, if possible, just for posterity. And, but I'll, I can provide that to the clerk and, and I'm, I'm sure that she would have no problem with distributing it.
It could be important for us to use something like this in review when we, when we do have a case come before us.
One more comment. If and when we ever get back to having planning commission meetings statewide like we've had, except with this virus situation, during the sessions on that two to three day period, there is always one session that deals specifically with quasi-judicial hearings.
Yeah. On Sunday.
If you go to those things, it's a good way to annually or biannually, or however often you go, to refresh your mind about this topic.
I'm a huge, well, I'm, I'm a fan of, of the, the Alaska Planning Association's meeting. I've trained, I've, I've provided that session a few times now. And I think you're right that the, it provides a much better opportunity for people to really get into it and to ask specific questions. Because I know I stick around for hours afterward and talk to people, so they get a lot of free legal advice from me at those. So I encourage- So I encourage you all to go to them when you can, again.
Isn't that considered ex parte? Just kidding.
Good, that's, that's good thinking. That's good thing, only if you're asking them about a matter that's pending before you.
So, so I have a question about the parties to a hearing. So the, the applicant would be a party. The borough administration is kind of a party and the, any public in opposition is a party, right? And so we're like looking at kind of three different viewpoints. And, and then weighing that against the, the code and the, um, the comprehensive plan and any other things that we have as part of the borough plan, right?
Well, here, here's what I'll say about the parties to it. It's clear that one party is the applicant, that's for sure. The way that the code is written now, it doesn't explicitly state that the borough is itself a party to the proceedings. But in these instances, it's always kind of understood that the borough does have an interest in it, that it has a right to present to the commission. Right? So it does, it, it has a right to present evidence as well. When it comes to third party members of the public who are interested in the outcome, but they, they're not necessarily parties. Right? So they don't have the right to present evidence and everything in the same way that the borough and the applicant do. Other than their testimonial evidence that they give you in the form of public comments.
But if it's potentially affecting their land, doesn't that give them the same right to a fair, your, the whole thing about the fair trial and stuff? Because, because if they're, because if they're potentially losing land or property or whatever, then, then they should have the same rights to the fair public trial kind of thing.
Now, and you're, you're right. And here's, here's what I'll say about that. As I understand it, and, and please, Mr. Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong. But like I said, I, I didn't go too far into the appeals process that comes after the, the conditional use permitting. But my understanding is that the only parties that have the right to appeal your decision is an aggrieved applicant. That's, that's my understanding. That's the, that's the way that I, I seem to recall it in code.
That's my understanding as well.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I think what you're talking about is not unusual because what, what we'll find is that different municipalities grant a different degree of rights to people based upon any number of circumstances. So you do have some communities who have codified ordinances that say that landowners within a certain square, you know, certain square miles of it or footage have the right to enter an appearance in these proceedings to kind of like intervene in an application and make themselves a party if they think that it's going to negatively affect them. That has not been done in this ordinance, but it is not outside, you know, the realm of what exists in Alaska right now for municipalities to do that. Instead, what the law, what the law requires as a base is that individuals who stand to be affected by another person's application have to be notified. Right? They have to receive notice and the opportunity to be heard. So that means that they get the public notice and they get to come to the hearing and they get to say, look, this is really going to affect me. And I may not be a party here, but this is going to have serious impacts on me. And if it's going to have impact on me, it's probably going to have impacts on that person and that person, that person. So it does inform your decision. It expands your viewpoint. But then again, it may be that down the line, the borough, the mayor, or the administration, or yourselves, you, you may think that you'd like to explore the idea of kind of expanding the rights of who are considered parties. And, you know, certainly you're, you have the authority to make recommendations like that.
Oh.
Okay.
One, one question, don't, doesn't virtually anyone that doesn't agree with a decision from one of these proceedings have the right to challenge it in Superior Court?
Well, I mean, not, not, not unless they were a party to the proceedings, like they were recognized as a party. Otherwise, they, they wouldn't be able to challenge necessarily the validity of the issuance of the permit or the non-issuance, but they certainly would have a right to sue that person for the things that they're doing that are having a negative effect upon their land.
So it sounds to me like it would behooves to add some language that would incorporate a wider base of people to engage prior to making that decision.
Yeah, and, and I leave that to your sound discretion, absolutely.
It's interesting.
Sir, I have a question about maybe what we can consider in, in these applications. And I can only really think of how to phrase it in, in an example. If the application submitted, for example, did not include a wastewater permit that is publicly available in the state, is that something that we can enter into the basis of decision? Or does it need to be in the application package?
Um, okay, I think I understand what you're saying. You're saying that the application came, that kind of development would require a wastewater permit, and they actually got it, but it just wasn't in the application?
Isn't that, yeah, that, that, yes.
Okay. So in, in that instance, you know, what, what, here's what I would say. I would say you can, if you know that that's the case, I would just recommend that you, as one of your conditions, say, provide us with a copy of the wastewater permit prior to initiating any kind of development or moving forward. You know, and after you do that, then, and we have confirmed that we have it and it's valid, then within X number of days, you can begin. Anything else? Because I work for you guys, so. Well, I mean, it sounds like there's nothing, but I, I hope that this is the first of, at least a few opportunities to, to chat with you all and to get to know you better, to learn a little bit more about the, the specific land use issues that you're facing as a community. And, well, you're a number of communities, frankly, all individual and, and I, I just hope that this was helpful to you. And I appreciate the opportunity to take up so much of your time in the middle of a week, talking about kind of boring legal stuff. But if, if you need anything from me, please just let me know. Reach out to the mayor and, and I'm happy to help however I can.
Shane, this was, this was amazing. I've, I've never been this intrigued and this excited about this kind of subject before, but I'm totally geeking out with you.
Oh, good. See, that makes me so happy. That's great. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thanks so much, Shane. You gave us a lot of good information and a lot of important things to consider in our processes going forward. So, yeah, thanks, thanks, everybody, for a really good training session. Any final thoughts or?
When it, when is this effective? What's the effective date of this?
The assembly passed it. It's.
So as of which date would someone need to start as of today, tomorrow, yesterday?
It was finalized when the assembly passed it and the mayor signed it. So I believe it went through in August. So as of today, it's, we can use it.
It, I've just taken a look at it. It, it became effective immediately upon adoption.
August, was it August?
Um, oh, sorry, it was September ninth.
September ninth.
Has this, so has this been added to the code online yet then?
Um, it's, it's been sent to MuniCode, but it, last I checked, it, it hadn't updated yet.
It hasn't updated yet, okay.
Yeah, I wanted to, this is Eric, so I just wanted to thank Shane, that was awesome training. And I, I wanted to see if anybody else would be interested in taking his recommendation of actually running through a scenario. I think that would be a, a great first step so we don't go looking like bumbling fools the first time one of these things come in.
That would be fun.
And any training, so I haven't, if Marcia, I think probably I'd lean on your expertise or, or, you know, knowledge of what would be something on the realm of possible coming up and then how, what answers you're looking for us as a commission to kind of dig into, like, the borough code and the, the planning commission documents to make a correct decision.
Yeah.
Well, then, that's, you know, Marcia and I had a, a really great conversation earlier this week where we, we talked about the possibility of doing a hypothetical scenario situation, which would be a real tabletop exercise. That's, you know, a set of facts and a, a, a application form with supporting documentation. Everything is supplied to you so that we can go through the conditions or the factors that you need to consider. And then we can all lead each other to the answers, like by using the comprehensive plans and the land management plans and so forth.
Can we, can we also have, like, somebody stand in as the, as the applicant? And then somebody stand in as like a public opposition? Just so that we can, you know, go through the whole process?
Well, you know, I would be happy to stand in as those because I've seen a lot of arguments in my days and in quasi judicial proceedings. So, I mean, I, I feel like I could, I could represent both sides of those pretty
Okay.
Well, if you wanted to invite me.
Mm-hmm. Cool.
Well, that sounds good to me. I would, I would like to do that process.
All right.
Do we have to move to adjourn or what?
No, I don't think so. Um, yeah. So do we have a net, a next meeting or what's going on in January?
We, have we set the, the, the regular meeting would be the third Wednesday in January? And I, I don't believe we've yet set that meeting. So would you like to go ahead and set it now?
Yeah, we could set that meeting. And if we, if we don't have anything before us, could we do this then? This tabletop exercise, or does that need some more work before that can happen?
Well, let's think about that. And maybe, you know, take some time after the meeting to think about that date. Shane, the third Wednesday in January would be choice number one.
And it, I'm sorry, is that, is that a regular meeting or would it be a work session?
I would anticipate that if, that it would be a work session in advance of any potential business that we might have at the regular meeting.
Perfect, perfect.
And that dates January 20th.
Thank you. Um, I think, I mean, I think that that would be plenty of time to put something together, but I would, I'll need to consult with Marcia about it, so.
And we will still be doing virtual meetings through February. As of now, that's what the assembly has, the date that they've put on it is the end of February.
Okay.
Very good. Well, our lawyers' time is continuing.
Oh, my gosh.
Really do appreciate it, Shane.
Very helpful information.
Oh, thanks so much, guys. Okay, well, thank you all very much. Nice to meet all of you and I look forward to talking to you again soon.
All right, thanks, Shane.
Thanks a lot, Shane.
Bye.
Care. All right, thanks, everybody. Good session.
Good night.
All right, good night.